Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hingham School Committee Meeting of November 18th, 2019. Going to call the meeting to order. Please note the meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. If anyone else in the audience intends to audio or video record the meeting, could you please let me know? Seeing none, all right, very good. Item number two, approval of minutes. We have minutes to approve from our meeting held on November 4th, 2019.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on November 4th, 2019.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Ness, thank you. Any discussion questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Approved. All right, terrific. Item three on the agenda is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement, and we welcome questions and comments as agenda items are discussed during our meetings. In addition, we have 15 minutes set aside at the beginning of each meeting for any questions or comments that fall under the purview of the school committee that are not on tonight's agenda. Is anyone here tonight to speak to anything not on the agenda? No? Okay, great. Then moving on to item number four, superintendent's report. Dr. Austin, you have a few things for us?
Oh, thank you very much, yes. Lots of stuff to report tonight. First, I want to talk a little bit about the kindergarten parent forum that was held on 11/5. Very well attended, standing room only, and lots of great questions from the parents. And I want to thank the administrators for attending and the teaching staff for presenting information that night. Very well done, and the feedback we received today has been very, very good. So that was a great meeting. So thank you to everyone who, and Dr. LeBilwa, particularly for putting that together. Thank you. The second item is the combined MASC conference. The conference was very informative, useful. Hingham Public Schools presented a collaboration with the Hingham Education Foundation for Code Red. It was very well done. I want to thank Libby Leweke for being the, I think, narrator for that, for better word, moderator for that. Dr. LeBilwa, we had Katie Roberts, Kira and Erin from the HEF, as well as Tina, I want to say Waymore, one of our specialists in our schools this year. So very, really well done and very impressed with the information they gave and well received. I attended the conference for three days, as well as several members of our school committee that attended. Very informative, and we got a lot of great information to bring back. So that was very good. Let's see, I will also say for, I'm sorry, you're in communications now, so apologize.
No.
I'm going on, just keep on going.
So that's it for your superintendent's report?
That's it, yeah.
All right, great. Libby, did you want to quick add anything about the computer science panel?
Well, there were some really good questions received from the audience afterwards, and it seemed like people who were interested were really interested. So kudos to Hingham for not only initiating this project here in Hingham, but then taking the time and the energy and having the ability to teach others how to do it as well. I mean, we really are avant-garde. It's exciting.
Yeah. Yeah, I heard really, I heard really great feedback from it as well, from people really, Hingham was really well represented, and people were really envious of what has been done here to date. So thank you to everyone who participated, and particularly to HEF for their funding of the Code Red initiative. All right, well, moving on to communications. Dr. Austin, do you have any communications?
Yeah, I just want to update the committee that the Hingham Public Schools has entered into an agreement with the MASC to update our Hingham Public Schools policy manual. So that's in the process now. I also want to say congratulations to all of our student athletes and coaches on a very successful fall sports season. It was a great, it was very enjoyable and well-fought playoffs for many of the teams, so congratulations to all those student athletes. And the Hingham Drama Club is presenting Mamma Mia this week that runs on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this week. If you have a chance to get out to that, I know that looks to be pretty exciting, so I encourage everyone to attend if possible.
Are there still tickets available, Rick?
There are still tickets.
A few.
By tomorrow, I guess, they'll be the same.
All right. Thank you. Emma, do you have student communications for us? Thank you.
Hello. On November 7th, the Student Council hosted a ping pong tournament to raise money for the Allison Clark Memorial Scholarship Foundation. The math team got a large victory over five out of six of the teams that were hosted by NDA. The drama program, as Dr. Austin said, is presenting Mamma Mia on November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And I did hear also the rumor that they're selling out quick, so get your tickets fast. The unified basketball team had a huge win over Waymouth on Friday, with many fans and the dance team cheering and dancing them on. They were very happy to get that victory. The field hockey team hosted the teachers versus students game. Mr. Hutchinson scored a hat trick, carrying the teachers to a 3-0 win. If anyone has extra coupons, Mrs. Jacobson is collecting them, so her class can do their extreme couponing for the Hingham Food Pantry. With around 23 sports committed seniors, an astonishing amount signed their National Letter of Intent on November 13th. This past Sunday, students helped at the SNAP event at the Sports Center. And lastly, the Holiday Fair is at the high school on November 23rd.
Great. Thank you. So thanks so much, Emma.
I appreciate it.
Other communications? Liza, did you have something?
Yeah, I just quickly wanted to share with the committee that in preparation for our meeting next week, I gave Dr. Austin a list of, or stream of consciousness of information we're going to be talking about fees, and have an initial conversation about fees. And so I just wanted to share with all of you what I provided to him of hoping we could get this type of information to have a more informative discussion. So just for the audience, an update of the participation data that was provided in the 2018 Athletic Department Overview, just so that it's current. Some history on athletic fees, you know, when were the last two times we raised it? And then benchmark community information, you know, how did they do their athletic fees? And I know Jim Quattramone had been already putting that together. And then other fees that we charge in town for students, I don't even know what they all are, so if we can get a sense at elementary, middle school, and high school level, and if possible, how do other benchmark communities do their fees for other activities? And then just if the administration has any proposals for them to provide to us. And if we look at contracts, what have the cost of living increases been in the salaries? Because that is reflected in coaches and staff stipends, so we can track expense costs rising over time. And then I did note, I checked our policy manual, we don't, I couldn't find a specific policy about this. I found something related to some revolving accounts. But there is a MASC policy about student fees, which is pretty basic, so we can have that for the next meeting as well. So I just wanted you guys to know that I had done that.
Thank you. I recognize this is a lot of information that we're going to be requesting, and I know it, we're coming up to a short week because of the Thanksgiving break next week, but, I mean, just as much, I guess, as we can get prior to the meeting or at the meeting?
Yeah.
Just to help sort of guide the discussion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't want to overwhelm during the holiday break. All right, thank you, Liza. Any other communications? No? All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to unfinished business. Item six, 6.1, to discuss proposed new policy 3.131, negotiation goals, and to act as appropriate. So it's in your package. Do you want to take us through it one more time, Carrie?
This is the second read of, actually, we could look at six.
You want to do them all together?
Yeah.
Okay.
The first, the first three, the negotiations policies. These proposed goals mirror the MASC sample policies on negotiations goals, and we thought this was important to add into our manual at this point, because we'll be negotiating with all six bargaining units this year. We did discuss that there may be better ways to phrase some of the policies, but because we want to make it clear that we support our teachers and our staff, and we want to put it in writing, that we're all going to be bargaining in good face, we thought it was important to put the policies forward right now. And also, we recognized that we're going to have the opportunity to review the policy language with the guidance of the MASC field director during, when we go through the entire manual. So we thought it would be good to put this in now. We did make one language change to 3.13, 3.2, and part of that quotes the statute, and Libby had pointed out last time that it wasn't clear. So we went back and looked at the statute and just added the word employees to the start of that. That's the only change there. The other ones look the same as they did at our last meeting. The other thing we did is we started adding in the MASC number, or letters, I guess, the codes for these, so when we do go through the whole manual, it'll be easier to kind of line them up where they belong. So that's why there's this slash, HA on one, HB, and then HF.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I was going to ask what that was. All right. Thank you. Do folks have questions on these or further comments?
Are you going through 6.1, 3.2, and 3.3 all kind of together?
Yeah, I think so. Yes. But we can re, I think maybe since we're going to vote them in, we'll read them in their entirety one more time. Do you want to, do you have a comment on?
I just have a comment on adopting the language from Massachusetts Association of School Committees or Massachusetts General Laws, sort of in general, and that's that to a layperson like myself, the language can be frequently discombobulating, and I think it can be poorly written. And I don't want to adopt anything that doesn't make sense to me, and so my focus will be on editing the language in such a way that it is clear and concise and grammatically correct and worthy of an A grade from a Hingham Public Schools English teacher. So, yeah.
Okay. We all agree that that is important as we go through, for sure.
Right. Exactly. Okay. All right. That sounds good. All right, do you want to read them through for us, Carrie, and then vote on them one at a time?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so the first one is 3.131, negotiations goal, and the code is HA. The Hingham School Committee recognizes that education is a public trust. It therefore is dedicated to providing the best possible educational opportunities for the young people of this community. In negotiations, this objective may be best attained if there is a climate of mutual trust and understanding between the negotiating parties. The school committee believes that the best interest in public education will be served by establishing procedures that provide an orderly method for the school committee and representatives of the staff to discuss matters of common concern. It has further recognized that nothing in negotiations will compromise the school committee's legal responsibilities, nor will any employee's statutory rights and privileges be impaired.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the new policy 3.131, negotiations goals, and that.
Yeah, okay. Do you have a second? Second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Liza. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. All right, great. Thank you.
Can you read the next one?
Yeah.
So this is 3.132, negotiations legal status, the code HB. All negotiations between the Hingham School Committee and recognized employee groups are conducted subject to Massachusetts General Laws. The legal status of negotiations is defined in, be defined by part, defined in part by Section 2 of that chapter as follows. Employees have the right of self-organization and the right to form, join, or assist any employee organization for the purposes of bargaining collectively through representatives of their own choosing on questions of wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment, and to engage in lawful concerted activities for the purpose of collective bargaining or other mutual aid or protection free from interference, restraint, or coercion. An employee shall have the right to refrain from any or all of such activities except to the extent of making such payment of service fees to an exclusive representative as provided in Section 12. So that is quoting the statute. Basic to all employee, employer negotiations is the concept of bargaining in good face. It is the legal responsibility of both the school committee and employee organizations to bargain in good face as they conduct negotiations. However, such obligation does not compel either party to agree to a proposal or make a concession.
Motion, yeah?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposed new policy 3.132, negotiations legal status.
Second?
I'll second that.
Liza? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's approved? Okay, great.
3.133, school committee negotiating agents, HF. The Hingham School Committee is responsible for negotiations with recognized employee bargaining units. However, because of the expertise and time required for negotiations, the committee may hire a negotiator or negotiators to bargain in good face with recognized bargaining units to help assure that mutually satisfactory agreements on wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment will be developed. The school committee will appoint the negotiators, and the fee or salary for their services will be established in accordance with the law at the time of appointment. The duties of the negotiators will be as follows. To negotiate, one is to negotiate in good face with recognized bargaining units to arrive at a mutually satisfactory agreement on wages, hours, and working conditions of employees represented by the units. One A. The negotiators may recommend members of the administration to serve on the negotiating team. They will not be members of any unit that negotiates with the committee, and their participation in negotiations must be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the committee. One B. They will direct accumulation of necessary data needed for negotiations, such as comparative information. One C. They will follow guidelines set forth by the committee as to acceptable agreements and will report on the progress of negotiations. One D. They will make recommendations to the committee as to acceptable agreements. Two, the negotiators will interpret the signed negotiated contracts to administrators and may be called upon to offer advice on various aspects of the contract administration during the terms of the contract with employee organizations.
Motion?
I'd make a motion to accept and approve the proposed new policy 3.133, school committee negotiating agents.
Second. Liza, a second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Approved. Thank you. All right. I think we have one more policy. And this is a second read as well, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a second read as well. It's the enrollment age, the age requirements. So we went back and reviewed everyone's suggestions and questions from the last meeting and incorporated the change into this policy. And we were fortunate that during our meetings, the principals happened to be meeting at central office as well, so we were able to get some real-time feedback, and that was really helpful. So basically, what this says is the expectation is that five-year-olds will go to kindergarten, first graders will go to grade one. If a parent has a question about their child's readiness to meet, they should meet with the principal. And in most cases, we know that the parents and the principal will work together and figure out and come to an agreement about the student's appropriate grade level, but if there is disagreement, it'll be the principal's decision. And if a parent still disagrees, they may appeal to the superintendent, and his, that will be the final word on that. The other thing this policy does is direct the superintendent to develop procedures to implement the new policy.
Any questions on this one or comments? All right. Do you want to give it a read?
Okay. There we go. 6.2, age requirements. Recognizing that it is generally in the best interest of a child and his or her classmates to maintain classes within reasonable chronological and developmental range, the Hingham Public Schools expects parents to enroll their children in kindergarten for the first year that they are eligible to attend. Parents with questions about their child's readiness should contact the principal of the school at which their child will attend. The school committee establishes the following policy on entrance age. One, children who will be five years of age on or before August 31st of the school year during which they wish to enroll will be eligible to enter kindergarten for that school year. Two, children who will be six years of age on or before August 31st of the school year during which they will enroll will be eligible to enter first grade for that school year unless there is a waiver that has been approved by the building principal. Three, the school committee directs the superintendent to establish procedures to support the implementation of this policy. Any appeals regarding placement shall be reviewed by the principal and the superintendent. The superintendent's decision shall be considered final.
All right. Motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve that and adopt the revisions to policy 6.2, age requirements.
Second?
I'll second.
Let me, thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to say, Michelle, that I want to commend Carrie and her team for a job well done. You know, I mean, we talk about, you know, several members of this body being new to the committee, and it's great to see that everyone is stepping up and doing a great work, so I want to just thank you and commend you.
Thank you. We have a great team.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that we worked really hard on this policy to try and make it, as Libby pointed out, to be understood by an average person. And so, me too, because there's been confusion over time about what age, what's the date, and, but we also thought very hard about making sure what's right for the student. And it was very fortunate that the principals were meeting, and so we could get their input, and that it was clear to them and clear to us. So this one, we took a lot of time, and we're not really talking about it here that much, but we have been talking about it for several years.
Mm-hmm.
And so.
I was waiting for you to add, Liza, how much fun you guys had in terms of editing back and forth.
We didn't do that this time. Well, we did a little bit. Yeah, you had your computer out, yeah. Yeah, we edit in real time.
Yeah, no, that's great. No, this is, this is, this is great, and I think this is very clear and sets the expectations for everyone, so I think it's really very well done. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other discussions? No? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. Great. Thank you. Thanks for everyone's work on that. All right. Item seven is new business, what I think everyone's here for tonight. 7.1, to hear a report on MCAS 2.0 testing from spring 2019. Dr. LeBilwa, is this your?
This is mine.
This is you?
Yeah, I set the mood.
Yeah. Set the, set the mood here.
Did you click your bottom button, white one? Yep, to your left. Yep. Push the lever all the way up. There you go. Just continuing, I've been lighting. Have you guys been vying?
Yeah, you got it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm incredibly excited to be here talking to you about our student achievement, right? So it's not, this is like my one opportunity to really talk about how well our students are performing. And so I am here this evening to present to you the MCAS assessment accountability results for the spring 2019 assessment season. Before I begin, I want to recognize the support of three of our content directors, district-wide department directors, who helped in putting this work together. That's Mary Andrews, Director of English Language Arts, Katie Roberts, Director of Science, and Dave Jewitt, Director of Mathematics. They do a lot of work with our faculty in digging deeper into the results, as well as I want to thank the presence of our principals this evening. I have Mary Andrews, sorry, Mary Eastwood, Principal at South School, Rick Swanson, Principal of High School, Derek Smith at Middle School, Dr. Wilcox from Foster, and Ms. Smith, Melissa Smith, from Plymouth River. So they are all here this evening, and just in the offhand, if there is any questions or anything that we can answer for you, because the work that we do relative to understanding our performance is a team effort with every single person I just mentioned and a whole lot of other people who will be here all evening. I just had to thank everyone. So I want to begin the presentation, we presented in four parts. Part one will give a overview of our accountability information coming out of last spring's testing assessment season, as well as I will then present to you the results of the 2019 MCAS performance, and I will look at all students, as well as how our students compared against our 20 benchmark communities. From there, I'll then present to you the performance of our students with disabilities and our, as well as the students at our high needs subgroup, and then compare their performance against that of the same population in our benchmark communities. I'll finally wrap up with some takeaways that we learned from our analysis of last spring's MCAS, and talk to you a little bit about next steps that we have to address some of the concerns that we see coming out of our performance. I'm going to begin again with the accountability information. So each year, the schools are given targets over the 2017 baseline year relative to their progress in English Language Arts performance, math performance, science achievement, as well as things like chronic absenteeism and other factors that influence a school's accountability. What I will note is in 2019, I want to recognize the work of Foster Elementary, in particular Dr. Wilcox, under Dr. Wilcox's leadership, as a 2019 School of Recognition for both high achievement and high growth. They are, the schools on the left, the right side identifies the progress the school is making toward meeting their targets that were established by the Commonwealth back at that baseline year 2017. So our high school is 80% meeting or exceeding their targets. Our middle school is at 61%, with substantial progress toward their targets. East Elementary, Foster, Plymouth River, and South are all in the 90%, and all meeting or exceeding their targets. So again, we're quite pleased with the accountability performance of our buildings relative to those non-performance-based metrics that they evaluate our accountability on. When we look at when compared against similarly structured schools across the Commonwealth, how well our schools performed, I will note that Hingham High School performed as well or better than 98% of high schools across the Commonwealth relative to the, this is just looking at the achievement percentages that our students were achieving at. Hingham Middle School is the 85th percentile, so better, as well or better than 85% of middle schools, 6 to 8 across the Commonwealth. East Elementary, the 94th percentile, Plymouth River at the 93rd, and both Foster and South at the 99th percentile. So they did as well, or all four of elementary schools, actually, all of our schools are performing in sort of the top quartile of schools across the Commonwealth. So I think as we get into the nitty-gritty of which grade performed how, I think it's also important that we step back and look at the overall achievement of our students. These numbers are pretty hard to throw a frown at, right? I mean, the achievement is quite strong. I'm now going to get into the actual performance of our students. So similar to previous years, what I'll first begin doing is give an overview of what assessments were taken. So at the high school, our grade nine biology was on the legacy MCAS exam, while English and math in grade 10 were on the next-generation MCAS assessment. Now, what I will note is that for grade five and eight, science, technology, engineering, they were sort of in a hybrid assessment structure, and Katie Roberts is here in case there's more questions there, but they were looking at both standards assessed under legacy assessment, as well as standards assessed under the next-generation assessment. And we are, next fall, next, this coming spring, rather, they will be all on Next Gen, is that right, Katie? Yes. So we were, we are, science has more of a stepwise model to get to the new standards. And then across grades, elementary grades in grade three, four, and five, there's a performance in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and those were all in the next-generation assessment. Middle school, grade six, seven, and eight, ELA and math, were all next-generation assessments. So just to give context, the next coming, the coming slides, these are the tests that they're referring to when they talk about the students and their performance. This gives an overall district view of how our students performed, the percent of students who were meeting or exceeding expectations. And what you'll note is at the high school level for grade 10 science, you'll note a little asterisk that says because they're still legacy, they're using the old terminology of proficient or advanced. So on the next generation, it's meeting or exceeding expectations. So what you see are the grades on the left, the discipline in which they were assessed, the percent of students meeting or exceeding, and then the state column identifies that same assessment but for statewide. So in Hingham, for example, grade three reading, 80% of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, while only 56% of the state was meeting or exceeding expectations. Grade three math is at 71%, grade four was at 78%, grade four math at 74%, grade five ELA was at 80%, and grade five math 79, and grade five science at 81%. Again, meeting or exceeding expectations. Again, meeting or exceeding expectation. At the middle school, grade six ELA and grade six math, the 90 and 85% respectively. Grade seven ELA is 90, grade seven math is 76, and grade eight ELA, 83%. Grade eight math, 64, and grade eight science, 76. When we look at all grades K to eight, 83% of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations when compared against only 52% of the students across the Commonwealth. In mathematics, 74% are meeting or exceeding compared against only 49% across the Commonwealth. At the high school, grade 10 ELA, 89% of our students are meeting or exceeding versus 61% of the state. And it's 83% in mathematics versus 59% of the state. And grade 10 science, 94% versus 74% of the state. Now, from here, what I'll do is I'll sort of present to you the performance of Hingham versus our benchmark communities. And what you'll note is for each of these slides, and I will move briskly, as you know, it's about a 70-plus slide presentation. So it's really to give visual impact. You do have a more, far more comprehensive report that delves much deeper into all of this as well. But at any given slide, the solid red bar is our performance against that of our benchmark communities. And we're going to begin with grade three reading. Then we look at grade three mathematics. And then coming out of grade three, some summary takeaways is about 79% of our Hingham third grade students met or exceeded expectations. That is an increase of 3% over last year's performance. We performed 10% or higher than the state average in all content strands in language writing and in reading, and performed above the state average in all 26 test items. In mathematics, 95% of grade three students earned a passing score with 71% meeting or exceeding expectations. We performed at the state, above the state average, rather, on all but one test question. And our grade three students performed between 11 to 14 points above the state average for all content strands in mathematics. This is our performance in grade four English Language Arts as well as grade four mathematics. Again, 78% of our fourth graders met or exceeded expectations. That's an increase of 2% over last year's data. We performed 12% higher than the state average in all content strands and above the state average on 25 out of 26 test items. 98 in math, in mathematics, 98% of our students earned a passing score with 74% earning a score of meeting or exceeding expectations. We performed at the state average on all 40 test questions and between 10 to 15 points above on all content strands. This is our performance in grade five ELA and grade five mathematics. And grade five, science, technology, and engineering. In ELA, 80% of our fifth graders met or exceeded with 12 percentage points higher than the state in all content strands and above the state average in all 28 test questions. Math, 98% earned a passing score with 78% earning a score of meeting or expectations or higher above the state average on 39 out of 40 questions and between 10 to 21 points above the state on all content strands. In science, 98% earned a passing score with 82% earning a score of meeting or exceeding expectations and above the state average on all 42 test questions. This is our performance in grade six ELA. And you'll notice the bar kind of swung to the left there. You'll notice that variation throughout the different grades. But it's important to note is that we are consistently at or above that performance of our benchmark communities. So you'll notice grade six ELA, grade six mathematics. 90% metering exceeding expectation. That's an increase of 4% from last year's performance. 20% performance, performed 20% higher in all content strands and performed above the state average on all 27 test items. In mathematics, 98% earned a passing score with 83% meeting or exceeding expectations, performed above the state average on all 40 test questions and between 13 to 33 points higher in all content strands in mathematics. This is our performance in grade seven English Language Arts as well as grade seven mathematics. ELA, 89% met or exceeded expectations with, that was an increase of 17% over last year. And that performance is the highest out of all of our benchmark communities for that grade and discipline. 19% higher than the state in all content strands and above the state average in all 27 items. In mathematics, 99% earned a passing score with 65% meeting or exceeding expectations, performed at or above the state average on 38 out of 40 questions and between 9 to 15 points higher on all content strands across mathematics. In grade eight ELA, this is grade eight ELA performance against benchmark communities. This is grade eight mathematics, and this is grade eight science, technology, engineering. ELA, 83% met or exceeded expectations. That's an increase of 5% over last year. 14% higher on all content strands and above the state average in all 27 test items. In mathematics, 97% earned a passing score with 64% of our students earning a score of meeting or exceeding expectations. Performed at or above the state average on 30 out of 40 test questions and performed between 7 and 11 points above the state average in geometry, expressions, and equations, ratios, proportional relationships, statistics probability, and the number system. In science, 99% earned a passing score with 76% of our students earning a score proficient or higher and performed at or above the state average on 40 out of 42 questions and 10 points above the performance of our peers across the state. I now want to turn our attention to look at that same data set examining the performance of our students with disabilities as well as our students who are considered high needs. So when we talk about high needs, we're talking about an unduplicated count of all students in a school district belonging to at least one of the following individual groups. So we have students with disabilities, English language learners, former English language learners as well as, or economically disadvantaged students. And it's an unduplicated count, so they don't count more than once through this calculation. But membership of any one of those groups means their performance is included in the data we're going to look at in just a minute. So when we step back and look at the performance of our students who are high needs, this is the same grid, but now we're focusing on their performance as a subgroup. You'll note that it's the same structure as the previous slide with our Hingham performance in the center column. On the right-hand column, looking at the performance of the state. In grade three reading, 45% of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations compared against 39 in the state. Grade three math, 38% versus 32. Grade four ELA, 41 versus 33. Grade four math, 38 versus 32. Grade five ELA, math and science is 39, 45, 50 versus 34, 30, and 30 respectively. When you step back and look at all students, I should go over the middle school first before I get to all three to eight. Looking at six, seven, and eight, again, it follows the same structure. 67% of our students in grade six are meeting or exceeding in ELA compared against 33% of the state. 54% in math versus 31%. 62% in ELA in grade seven versus 27. 43 in math versus 26. Grade eight ELA, 44 versus 28 in math, 31 versus 24, and in science, 44 versus 24. While the performance here isn't as strong as we saw in the whole group, what you'll notice is that we do have a pattern of performance higher than the state for the most part. In all grades, we step back and look at all students in grades three through eight. In ELA, 48% of this population are meeting or exceeding expectations compared against 33% of the state. And 41% of these students are performing at meeting or exceeding expectations versus 29% at the state level. In grade 10, grade 10 ELA, that's, we have 53% of this population meeting or exceeding versus 36% of the state. Grade 10 math is 34 versus the state's 33. In grade 10 science, we have 70% versus the state's 52%. We'll then going to break down and you'll see where we compare for these, say, against the same benchmark communities for the subgroup. Here's our performance in grade three reading, in grade three mathematics. This is grade four English Language Arts compared against grade four mathematics. Here is grade five ELA versus grade five mathematics. Grade five science. Grade six English Language Arts, which is a mirror performance to the whole group when we looked at where they fell for the whole group. And this is grade six mathematics. Grade seven ELA, grade seven math. Grade eight ELA, grade eight math. And then grade eight science, technology, and engineering. That, so Hingham, we have two major subgroups. We have the high needs group, and then we have our students with disabilities. So this next set of data is just about the students in a school or a district with a disability as defined under IDEA who have an active IEP. And those students then factor into this analysis. When looking at students with disabilities meeting or exceeding expectations, the grid is similar. You'll notice Hingham and then a comparison against the state performance for the same population of kids. Grade three reading is 31% versus 22. Grade three math is 31 versus 18. Grade four ELA is 35 versus 17. Grade four math is 32 versus 18. Grade five ELA, 29 versus 16. Grade five math, 40% versus 15. And grade five science, 50% versus 19%. Grade six ELA is 48% versus 15 at the state. Grade six math is 32% versus 16. Grade seven ELA is 39 versus 12. Grade seven math, 25 versus 12. Grade eight ELA, 32 versus 14. Grade eight mathematics is 16 versus 11. Grade eight science, technology, engineering is 35 versus 15. When we step back and look at all students in grades three to eight, 37% of our students with disabilities are meeting or exceeding expectations versus only 16% at the state level. In, in English Language Arts and mathematics, that number is 30%. And here in Hingham, versus 15% across the state. At grade 10, grade 10 ELA, our percent was 39 versus the state's 22. Grade 10 math was 21 versus the state's 19. And grade 10 science was 65% of our students versus the state's 39%. This is the performance of kids with disabilities in grade three reading compared against the benchmark, our benchmark communities. Here is our performance in grade three mathematics. Grade four ELA, grade four math. Grade five ELA, grade five math. Grade five science, technology, engineering. Grade six English Language Arts. Grade six mathematics. Grade seven English Language Arts. Grade seven mathematics. Grade eight ELA, grade eight math, and grade eight science, technology, and engineering. I often get the question about the number of MCAS ALT assessments that are given at any given year. And so last spring, the total given across the district was 12. So these are students who are assessed on the alternative standards rather than taking the MCAS Next Generation. East School had one, Foster one, Plymouth River one, South four, Hingham Middle School two, and Hingham High School three. This is the decision-making that the team will go through when making a determination of whether or not a student qualifies or is eligible to participate in MCAS ALT. We begin by, does a student have an IEP or a 504 plan? If the answer is no, then they're ineligible to take the test, right? They, they have to have a disability in order to qualify. Is the student generally able to demonstrate knowledge and skills in a computer or paper-based test either with or without accommodations? Are they working at standards at or near their grade level expectations? And if they answer no, can the student participate fully, demonstrate their knowledge and skills in a standard test without, with or without accommodations? If the answer is no, then they're eligible for MCAS ALT. Otherwise, if you go the other way, if the student is working at grade level, at or near grade level expectations, and the student does have a complex and significant disability that prevents them from demonstrating their knowledge, then they would also be eligible for an MCAS ALT. But again, this decision-making matrix led to 12 ALTS in Hingham last year on an individual basis depending on that individual student's needs. That was a lot of data, just to give it you, get at you all at once. And so now I want to talk a little bit about our next steps and the areas for growth that we've identified across the district. So we begin with analysis of the district's school and student results. We do an item analysis and look at disaggregated results with our teaching staff. So our teachers actually get a chance to look at how the students performed and actually look and see individual students' performance. And the times we get released items or responses back that teachers can look at to see how students responded. We continue to use MCAS scores, an item analysis, and additional assessment results to track and monitor individual student performance and cohort results. We have continued opportunities for students to practice answering a variety of types of questions and assessment measures to practice test-taking strategies. We have an emphasis on instructional strategy, which promotes critical thinking, extended problem-solving, and writing for a variety of purposes. Regardless of the test structure or the question we ask, if those skills are secure, kids will be able to show their knowledge, right, regardless of the question type. Use of supervision and evaluation to be thoughtful relative to consistent implementation of the curriculum standards. We do have tunnel one programming to support eligible students. And we are working, and you'll hear a little bit more about this as time goes on, but we are redesigning our K to five intervention system and then implementing a six to eight academic intervention system. I think the, the data speaks for the need to address the needs of students who may not only have students with disabilities, but also the students who may still be struggling in a particular area but may not have access to resources or support to the extent that we'd like to see, which is a big focus of ours right now in the district is we have formed the HTSS Academic Task Force, which is working to redesign K to five and implement and roll out a six to eight academic intervention. So the goal is we will be bringing to you a proposal to launch a comprehensive K to eight intervention model in reading, writing, and mathematics, which is going to be another conversation for another day. But it is coming to address some of the data patterns that we're seeing. In terms of elementary ELA, targeted implementation of the standards-based reading program Journeys is underway and continues. Integration of the Journeys Reading Program with Empowering Writers, which is our writing program across the elementary level, to best scaffold and reinforce writing in the narrative, expository, and persuasive forms. A district-wide small group tiered instruction in K to five, regular practice with standards-based reading assessments across the elementary grades. And that happens through our Journeys curriculum. And incorporation of writing strategies across all content areas. Writing does, is not just unique to English Language Arts, right? Their writing, kids are writing and showing, demonstrating their knowledge through writing across all content areas. Revision of the Hingham Public Schools MCAS Prep Guide to align with the spring 2020 test parameters. Direct instruction, sorry, I miswrote, on responding to questions that compare multiple texts. That is an area that our students are continuing to develop and grow in. Ample opportunities for online test-taking practice using Edge Elastic and other resources to ensure familiarity with format, environment, especially regarding essay writing and required text boxes, right? So it's a different animal to get a paper and pencil and to write an essay versus to type an essay in a text box that will then move as you type more. And you sort of lose sense of where the beginning was. So those are all strategies, right, that we're working with our students to demonstrate a level of mastery and proficiency of. We are working to include our special educators in curriculum meetings and ongoing discussions regarding MCAS findings and strategies for improvement. In elementary math, again, district-wide tier-one instructional coaching with a focus on student-centered outcomes. District-wide instructional coaching on number talks to help classroom teachers promote flexible thinking with based-on arithmetic. Increased practice modules on new question types. Team meetings between grade-level teachers and elementary math specialists to discuss building-based areas of strength and growth. We're working for more coordination with the math department and special education department to discuss areas for improvement and strategies to actually get that improvement underway. We continue to develop our power standards and elementary progression of standards through multiple grades. Increased support for struggling learners via elementary math tutors. In the committee, I will note, while we have two full-time math, two full-time math specialists across the elementary level, they're actually .5 in each of the schools when we compare that again. So full-time reading to, reading specialists in every elementary school. So we have to be thoughtful when we see variations in performance. We also have variations in support that are happening across the, the buildings. Increase, I'm sorry, continued review of the rigor that aligns with everyday math units of study and materials as needed. Grade three, the focus is on geometry and measurement with area and perimeter. In grade four, they're looking more critically at multi-digit arithmetic on numbers less than a million, or yeah, million. Grade five, classifying two-dimensional figures based on their attributes. That's the focus in grade five. We do want to maintain a focus on the everyday math, one- and two-day open response units. In grade four, focusing on improving constructed responses and articulation of understanding. So as they look at the data, they look at patterns of where we might be not meeting the standard as strongly as we could. In grade five science, there's an increased emphasis on data practices, including data table and graph analysis. So on the right, you'll see an example of what we mean by having to look at data tables and extrapolate information from data tables and graph analysis. Strategies also for improvement on open response questions. And that, again, speaks to the need for literacy support across multiple content areas, right? It's not just in reading or English Language Arts where our students are having to write. It's not just in reading or English, language arts, where our students are having to write. We're seeing this show up here in science with our open-response questions, including reading comprehension strategies like highlighting relevant content, circling action words, and addressing each part of a multi-step question. So we do think very critically about where are the, what are the question structures like where our students are consistently showing not as strong performances in other areas, and these is where we're identifying these areas for further focus and attention. At the middle school, and there's two slides here, so this is middle school English, part one, implementation of strategies for reading nonfiction, notice and note, stances, signposts, and strategies. That's, that was a book, a sort of methodology that's focusing on promoting improved reading comprehension for nonfiction. Sorry, I didn't get that right. Okay. Small group instruction in reading labs for students demonstrating needing for additional reading support. Incorporation of current events articles for expository nonfiction practice. Targeted grammar instruction through Language Network and other resources. Collaboration across disciplines to incorporate com-reading comprehension strategies. And updating our prep guide to reflect, again, the parameters of the test parameters for spring 2020 administration. We're also looking at updating the department's MCAS website and resources used for practice and exposure there. Direct vocabulary instruction using Classic Roots program. Direct instruction in responding to questions that compare multiple texts. Ample opportunities for online test, again, practice using Edge Elastic and other resources that actually give kids exposure to the online testing format, as well as the inclusion of special education teachers in curriculum meetings and ongoing discussions regarding MCAS findings and strategies for improvement. And that, I think, speaks to Dr. Viness's leadership and partnership with our directors, that that collaboration between special education and regular education is continuing to grow. And hopefully we'll reap the benefits of that collaboration in time. In terms of mathematics, in middle school, we're looking at, again, keep in mind here that the computer-based assessment at the middle school level is still in its infancy. The department staff will have multiple professional development sessions to continue to prepare for technology-rich questions and utilizing various tools that they might have just been able to use, a ruler or other kind of a mathematical tool, that now have to be manipulated and operated through a computer screen, right? So that kind of practice and exposure is critically important to ensuring fluidity in assessment setting. All six state students will practice two different online math tests as part of their math preparation. The department staff is adapting exams to include more multiple choice options and items. They're working to learn how new technologies can help create questions similar to those on MCAS. So how do we replicate the kinds of questions that kids are getting on the state assessment in our day-to-day instruction is really the focus there. Increased communication, again, between mathematics and special education to ensure smooth transition to the online platform. Grade six Title I support continues to identify gaps in students' knowledge, and particularly in the area of mathematics. And I will note that the general education intervention model that's running at the middle school is completely Title I-funded, and it is operating in grade six mathematics only. And so as we talk about needing an HTSS academic model that's actually comprehensive, K-8, here's another example of where what we do have there is because of federal funding, if that wasn't there, we would not have that ability with the flexible groupings to actually get at the math performance at our middle school. We also have shifted staffing to create smaller grade six class sizes and smaller grade seven math class sizes. And evaluation of the grade eight curriculum decisions regarding MCAS versus progress toward Algebra I proficiency. So we're thoughtful about the progress our students are making in meeting those expectations in grade eight and evaluating the decisions that we're making based off the results of the MCAS assessments. In terms of science, again, you'll notice a pattern here where we're looking at open-response questions, and sort of how to respond to open-response questions. Again, we're looking at reading comprehension strategies such as highlighting relevant content or circle the action words and addressing each part of a multi-step question. Here are some examples where you're looking at, and Katie helped me out here because I'm just glancing at this, but the text you're having to read on the left relative to bridge construction, right? The Golden Gate.
The new assessment has modules in which the students are reading a fairly complex passage or data table or whatnot, and then answering a series of interdisciplinary questions. So this one question about bridges got it chemistry, it got it physics, it got it engineering design through three or four questions that were about this case study. So.
Thank you. So that just shows, again, sort of the shifts in the assessment relative to how our instruction is sort of addressing the same structure. In terms of high school English, looking at 10th grade shared professional practice goal, targeting best practices for analyzing paired passages that represent multiple genres. Incorporating writing strategies across all content areas. Direct instruction on responding to multiple-choice and technology-enhanced questions that compare multiple texts. Looking at, again, the MCAS prep guide to reflect the new parameters. Updating practice resources that are available to students to practice and have exposure prior to the test-taking. Direct vocabulary instruction using Classical Roots. Ample opportunities for online test-taking practice through Edge Elastic and other resources. And again, the partnership with special education isn't just happening at elementary, middle school, it's happening throughout the district. So it's really critically important for our special educators to understand the performance of our students with disabilities and then make sure that we're targeting instruction in the appropriate areas. In terms of mathematics, again, they, this was the first time they administered the next-generation assessment in mathematics at the high school, and the same for English, language arts. So again, they performed an audit, MCAS audit for the five different courses that teach sophomores. So again, when you take a grade-ten test, you want to make sure that all the classes that are being taken at that level are effectively preparing our students to perform on the MCAS assessment. They will continue to focus on adjusting to the 2017 framework adjustments. 10th grade students will practice two different online math tests with their classroom teachers, again, to get ready and get familiar with the test-taking format. The math department has developed a website to house MCAS 2.0 practice material, and again, similar to English, as an opportunity to get a sense of what the tests look like, what the structure of the questions will look like, and get familiar with the online format. Professional development regarding, again, questions and building those types of technology-rich questions into our day-to-day instruction. The math director hosted a conference for 20 other math coordinators across the region to discuss appropriateness, concerns, and practice practices with what we learned coming out of the first administration of the next-generation MCAS at grade-10. Math director met with the test writers and was also part of the DESE panel review to ensure that the grade-10 test aligns with the curriculum frameworks. An after-school MCAS boot camp was held, well, sorry, will be offered, rather, in the weeks leading up to the spring MCAS for our at-risk grade-10 students. And students who did not initially pass MCAS in spring, last spring, will receive individual tutoring prior to the retake this fall. New small-group instruction courses at the high school will be monitored for the effects on MCAS performance. So as we make instructional shifts, we're curious to see if those shifts then elicit higher performance as assessed through the MCAS system. In high school science, strategies will focus here, again, on open-response questions. Notice the trend, the pattern there? Including reading comprehension strategies, and again, addressing each part of a multi-step question. New curriculum unit guides have been drafted to align to the next-generation standards with an increased emphasis on genetics, evolution, biotechnology, and real-world higher-order problem-solving. And again, you see some sample multiple-choice questions as well as some sample open-response questions. So a sample open response, and this is what we're working on, right? Building those skills in our students. A sample question looks like a barley plant has 14 chromosomes in its diploid cells. At a particular stage in its life cycle, the barley plant produces haploid cells. Gametes? Gay mates, thank you. A, identify the expected number of chromosomes in a haploid cell of barley plant. Identify and generally describe the cellular process by which the haploid cells are produced. And C, describe what a barley plant uses the haploid cells for and explain why the cells must be haploid for this purpose. Right? So that gives you a little taste of the knowledge expectation and application of science, right?
I'm haploid, but I am not in.
That's, you'll be here all week. That's right. In terms of our kids with disabilities, we also recognize that difference in achievement compared to all students versus our students with disabilities. So our focus here continues to be on the focus on measurable writing and associated data collection methods to track and monitor individual student performance. Ensure that our IEP goals are aligned with the grade-level learning expectations happening across the general education curriculum. Content-directed PD in ELA, math, and science, and teacher-level data analysis of student responses. So we want to include, we have been in working last year and this year to include our special educators more fully in the MCAS analysis process, where historically, they may not have played such an active role in that process. We are looking, again, at tiered instruction at the elementary, middle school level. That is a huge part of our district strategy to address the achievement of all students, right? Right now, without a comprehensive K-8 intervention model, special ed is sort of the only game in town, right? There is no other mechanism by which we can give the kid, the students, that kind of support that they need to show progress. So we are, as a district, instructionally committed to providing all students equitable access to a K-8 intervention system regardless of school of enrollment or grade placement. So that is one of the major proposals we're bringing to you all as a part of the 21 budget proposal. Provide frequent, high-quality PD opportunities for faculty and staff, and you'll see that also reflected in our budget requests for next fiscal '21. I'm happy to answer any questions that there may be. I know there's a lot of information, but myself as well as our team is here, and we're more than happy to jump in and address any questions or concerns the committee might have relative to our performance.
Thank you. That is a very comprehensive report and really reflects the dedication and commitment that all of our educators have to our students. A lot of things that Dr. Viness has brought to the district since being here over the last couple of years, so I think those results are really amazing. And it's, it's one of those things, you know, that student achievement, that's what we're all here for, whether we were called to it as a profession or as a volunteer on this board. So it was really great to see such strong results. And that, does anyone have any questions about the results? It was a lot. We all received advanced copies of it in our packets, and then we also have this very, the color-coded booklet with the comments. But does anyone have any particular questions?
I just have one question. Does the high-needs MCAS score has any, you know, effect on the overall MCAS score of the students?
No. Where, so where are stu-, so they don't. So membership in high-needs has no bearing on how all students performed. What we do know is in accountability, there's actually two structures. We look at the performance of all students against those metrics, and then look at the performance of our lowest 20% against the same metrics. That's the only place where kids who are lower, where in terms of our targets and our growth, like, we're now compared against all students and our lowest-performing 20%. Like, that's how they calculate. So if you look at your accountability section of your reports in the front, you'll notice the two columns. One will say lowest-performing students, and one will be all. But membership in high-needs plays no bearing on the performance of all. Where the factor comes in of how our least, most at-risk kids are performing comes in accountability, not in MCAS performance. Tim, Kim, and everybody.
Thank you.
Dr. Ed, yeah?
When you first started out, you just used the phrase attendance, and then you moved on. At a meeting that I was at earlier today, we were talking about chronic absenteeism, which I suspect is the first cousins with a penalty of 10% or 18 days. Would you expand on that?
Explain that? Sure will. So you probably, you were probably attending a school council meeting.
Were you?
For a chance? Okay, there you go. That's great news. So the principals and I and Dr. Austin, as well as Dr. Viness and John, met last Thursday. And at that meeting, we unpacked our accountability performance. So that's that first set of data. What we're recognizing as an area of focus, I would say for the entire district, is on the impact of chronic absenteeism on our accountability rating. So many of our schools got zero in terms of, for the qualitative analysis, based on kids who are absent more than 10% of the school year. So regardless of why you're out, regardless of the reason, if you are absent from school for 10% or more of a school year, you are considered chronically absent, and that data factors into the accountability performance of our schools. And it's 10% of total enrolled days. So if you're here, a student in Hingham, for the entire school year, that's 18 days. So if you're absent for 18 days or more, then you're, that is considered chronic absenteeism and impacts our accountability ratings. So the principals are all working with their school councils to talk to their parent population about how do we get a better, develop a stronger understanding in the community that this is in fact an issue. And so we have families who may take a couple of weeks for vacation and then might be out for illness or a sickness, and those 18 days, believe it or not, add up quicker than you think. And so we're looking at our school-based procedures to notify parents sooner. We're thinking of targeting seven days absent in a school year, will trigger a letter from the principal to remind the family of the importance of school attendance. So we're trying to make it not be about our, what the structure's saying is kids, what we know is there is a difference in performance of kids who are out more than 10% of a school year, right? If you're meeting, missing 18 days of instruction, that can influence how well of a job we're doing, right, relative to education. So it's now a part of the accountability structure for a reason, which is why we're now thinking through, how do we best communicate that to our community so that parents understand you just can't be out for two weeks on vacation, right? That's, that's, that's 10 days right there. So if there happened to be an illness or another sickness, or if students are being released for more than half of the day, that counts as an absence. And that, all of those absences, if you look at the individual schools, you'll see it will vary somewhat, but for the most part, five out of our six schools got a zero, which means their chronic absenteeism rates went up over eight, the fiscal, over school year of 17, 18, which is concerning. Now, the way that's structured is your data in one year versus another, if you went down, you get a zero. If you stayed the same or no change, you got a one. If you went up slightly, you got a two. If you, and I'm trying to remember that I got this right, so I'm looking at the principals, so tell me if I'm wrong. If you sort of met your target, you got a three or a four, and if you exceeded your target, you got a five. And so all of the, maybe it's a four. So all of those numbers, it's a four. So all of those numbers then factor in. Remember at the beginning, we were talking about targets and the percent that people are meeting their targets? That's where those percentages come in. And so we actually spent Thursday at our administrative team unpacking the assessment structure and looking at where are we falling short relative to our performance and the pattern across five of the six schools. And actually, in all six schools and certain subgroups, was the chronic absenteeism, which is, from our data, is saying that it's actually going up, not down. That's where the zeros come in when you look at that rating. That's something we have very little control over, so that's why you're working in your school councils, and hopefully all the committee at your school council meeting will hear similar conversations of us strategizing, how do we get that word out? How do we make the community more aware that this is a challenge? Thank you. You're welcome. Libby, sorry.
Any sense as to why the chronic absenteeism is going up?
I mean, if you look at the total N, the principals, when we left on Thursday, we're going back to their school-level data to begin to look at who the kids are, are there any patterns? It's too early for us to tell. We just unpacked it on Thursday. But we are looking at if we see any patterns or if there's any particular reasons. Vacations play a role, as do, some students' participation in elite sports may play a role, right? So there's lots of different reasons, but the challenge becomes, when everybody's got a different story, you step back from that, and the data is the data, right? So they're doing a better, we're doing a better job of trying to communicate earlier to families that you're now at the seven-day mark. We want to make sure you're aware that another 11 days, you know, we're on track to have that chronic absenteeism challenge, which we know puts kids at greater risk for lack of school success. So that's why that 10% chronic absenteeism is such a, is a new addition to the Commonwealth accountability structure, which wasn't there previously. Ness?
I would just encourage you to look at whether there's social-emotional-type issues causing the kids not to attend school, because I know that can happen.
Fair enough. Yeah. Carrie?
Is there a correlation between the kids that are chronically absent and poor MCAS scores?
We have not done that analysis. So we're just trying to figure out who the kids were. The challenge becomes, we get 2019's accountability information in the fall of the 1920 school year. So all that data is pulling off of last school year, so they're now having, that's why you're hearing some discussion of it now, is principals are going back and looking at who are those students. We have not discussed, however, a separate analysis, seeing to the extent how much of the variability of scores is accounted for by chronic absenteeism.
I also went to a school council meeting today, and we discussed this.
The same thing. Good, good. That makes me feel good that you're hearing more about it.
I've been listening to you. So, and one thing that came up also was the issue of school refusal. And it just, are you looking at that, too?
So we're looking at everything. The reality is, we have kids not coming to school, and that's a problem. Period.
Right.
Period. End of discussion. Hard stop right there, right? Regardless of the reason, what we're also very careful of, and we talked about this as a team, is not letting individual student challenges become a reason to dismiss the concern, right? So, oh, well, they're, they're school refusal, that, you know, what are you gonna do? That's not good enough for us, right? So, what are the strategies we're putting in place? What is the structure the schools understand it to be when a student is refusing school or is out because of a mental health issue or a hospitalization? And we also have students who are going through cancer treatment. I mean, like, I don't, not all of this is, what it's doing for us is it's giving us pause to be reflective. Do we actually know who these kids are? Do we know the reasons why? And many of the students, we probably could tell you, right, who they were, just by looking at the principals, they could probably tell you who they are, and all of their reasons, for the most part, are valid, whether it's school refusal, whether it's mental health. The reality is the reality. If you're out for more than 18 days in a school year, you're chronically absent, hard stop. They don't care why. They don't, we don't have the ability to say it's an excused absence versus an unexcused absence. All the absences count. And so, that's where our other strategies, so our students who might be out for hospitalizations, for example, who are receiving tutoring, that is a different, that's counted differently by the state, because they have other things that are going on, and there's been a physician who has said the student can't be in school, so there's another structure around that. Where we're, what we're really focusing on are, what are those, what are those strategies we need to implement to make sure that parents and community members understand? So, while we do have a proportion of the population who is because of real, either mental health or school refusal challenges, we also have a fair amount who, you know, the feeling is school, it, this is more important right now, right? And what we would always say is, school is the most important thing always. The other thing to note is, it's not just important to remember particularly for elementary and high school, it's not just the attendance at the tested grades, right? It's attendance in the building. So, if you have kindergarten families, for example, like, oh, it's kindergarten, we're gonna do two weeks in a year, like, we have that happen, right? That, that number is counting towards that school's chronic absenteeism. It's not just grades three, four, and five. So, that generates another kind of conversation, which is why the high school, believe it or not, when you just look at their performance of all students, they actually showed progress toward their, and growth over their target. They're the one, the only schools that got a four, right, for chronic absenteeism. When the kids get more independent, right, it's our younger population, particularly across elementary, where we're seeing the pattern of zeros across all the schools.
There's severe penalties in the high school if you're missing class.
Right.
There aren't severe penalties in the other schools, which, I applaud, I applaud you for communicating, for making an effort to communicate to parents that it is important to go to school.
100%.
And now, we know that we have data that people are, that people are not coming to school.
Correct.
And.
And it's impacting our accountability ratings.
Please, everyone, it's important.
Right.
Now, we know. We have, I mean, everybody says data will tell you. We don't know the details of it, but as a broad message.
And I'm pretty sure, I think it was Tony Gettys who calculated in the back of a, back of an envelope. Had he gotten a three or a four, he would've gone up like two or three percentage points, right? So, that, like, that, it's real. This is real stuff. So, that's what we're in the phase of right now, is understanding who these families, these students are, what are the individual reasons, and then if we see patterns, whether it's school refusal or, or social-emotional challenges, how are we taking steps to address those needs? But, everything's sort of on the table for looking at. We're trying to address the challenge. Now, to be fair, with the benefit we have in all of this is, we're able to turn our attention there, because we do have relatively high achievement scores. See what I'm saying? So, other school districts are trying to figure out why their, why their math performance is going down. See, that's where they're getting their zeros. Our zeros are in areas that don't impact the teaching, that are not directly related to teaching and learning, right? That are really having to do with attendance at school, which I think is a benefit to our team, where we're able to focus on some other things to increase that, that data, to just, again, be reflective of the excellence in the community. We want everyone to be proud of our performance, too, right? And I think the community has a lot to be proud of, but we also have a lot to be thoughtful of relative, particularly to absenteeism rates across the district. So, you will be getting quicker outreach at seven absences now, going forward, to make the parents, community, the families aware that this does matter, and we are tracking and counting. So, that's not to say there aren't valid reasons. I don't want anyone to feel, as who's listening right now, that we're not saying you can't be absent. That's not what we're saying. But, when you hit 10% of a school year, right, now, we've got a little bit more going on there than just, I was sick for a couple of days. 18 days absent is a lot of days. That's our threshold. Yes, please. Liza?
So, I'm gonna start with my positive question. Grade six and seven, ELA.
Killing it.
What is, what's going on? That's unbelievable. Number one of our benchmark communities and very high scores.
And I will, you know, I homologate to 10th grade two, who were there, too, for 10th grade for number one in the benchmark. Instead, number two, the absentee, but their math was wrong.
Their math was wrong.
I'll give it to you, Mary.
Sorry, Mary, do you want to go up to the microphone? Sorry. I know nobody likes to do that, but.
Do you want me to pass it?
Or?
No, I certainly can. I actually don't. I think I'd have to say across the board for all the teachers in the department and across the departments, for all the disciplines, the amount of work that they've put into preparing the students, to find that combination between teaching the skills that the students need to know to be competent writers and readers without teaching to the test all the time, has really been a tricky balance to strike, but they've done it and done it really, really well. And it's been the result of, and again, I think that the same can be said across the disciplines, but taking that responsibility really, really seriously. And Paul and I have joked a little bit about the scariest part of being here. Next year, you might be calling me up to talk about something else. So, we're, we're very proud of our successes, but we also know that in a standardized test situation, it, the ebb and flow is unpredictable sometimes. But, I can say with full confidence that they've, they've taken the task, teachers and students, very seriously, and should be proud of the results across the board.
And we've seen a similar pattern over time. So, what that's also telling us is, that grade six population who's at the top of the benchmark last year was where the fifth grade fell. And before that, see what I mean? So, it's all cumulative, so that, so that also shows you the variability in the, in this, the assessment year to year.
Yeah.
Right? Like, that also shows.
And the predictors would indicate that that's probably not going to be exactly where the grade six will fall next year, based on where we're headed. So, that, that's the truth of the matter, too. But, but for now, we'll take it. I'll be absent next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, my other question is about grade eight. I noted in your data that for both Hingham and the state, it seemed like scores progressively went down in middle school.
From sixth to eight?
Yeah. Is, did the state share anything, or are the other communities of, is, is that just, you know, teenage years, or, or is it the test, or?
I think, well.
Yes, come on up. Thank you, Dave.
State standpoint, that, I mean, that trend is pretty typical, that we see that kids tend to go down over time, because a lot of times, we'll look and see, like, okay, so, we went down, but how did we go down also in comparison to how the state went down? And our, you know, was this cohort 20 points ahead of the state in sixth grade at a higher achievement level, and now they're still there? So, on a state level, yes, for sure. And then, on our level, we're still, our eighth grade in particular, if you guys recall, I mean, well, for some of you guys who are a little bit newer, too, is we've long, we've long had sort of this conversation that we've kind of had the target on grade 10, and that we need to make sure that kids could pass Algebra I, because that, if they could pass Algebra I, they were going to pass the 10th grade MCAS, and then so far, every student's passed the 10th grade MCAS, right? And so, we want to make sure that we're not losing our most struggling learners. And so, we knew that that meant, in eighth grade, we started teaching a class that was actually a little bit slower than the standards, because we were solely, we, we were getting to a point where we were having too many kids who weren't ready for Algebra I, that we were running this risk of them not graduating when they got to 10th grade, the one that really mattered. So, we slowed down, gosh, it's been a while now, this has been happening, five, six years. We slowed down those standards to get those kids ready for Algebra I, and so, we always knew we were gonna have sort of some weaknesses there in terms of MCAS growth. And so, but, then, you know, a couple of other things happened, and along with the 2017 standards coming in, we were making sort of some programmatic shifts in grade seven, and we had those courses, and we just said, we're gonna wait, let's see what happens with 10th grade, because whatever happens with 10th grade is going to then sort of slide back into the middle school grades. So, now, three years in, we know what's happening in 10th grade at least. Well, we have our first look at that. So, we've gone back, and we're, Wednesday, we're actually doing a very, probably one of the deepest data dives we've ever done as a team, in terms of every teacher's getting their classroom performance per each course that they teach. But then, we are cross-referencing all of the different places where students could have been in a class. So, whether it's, you know, the multiple different levels in grade eight to grade seven, along with the small, the co-taught classes, along with the small group instruction classes, and, you know, kind of coded it and color-coded it. And you can see, as you look, so, again, some of that performance, you go, oh, yes, that Math 8 class that we said we're slowing down? You can see red, 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 where other classes are green, green, green. And so, then, we're gonna start to have these questions about, okay, well, then, what's proper for these kids? Is it, do we, does that then mean that we're not teaching the appropriate standards for going forward? Or, does it mean we're making some concessions so that we are truly teaching these kids who, again, we're, a lot of times, we're making sure the deficits with fractions are cleared up before they hit high school in arithmetic, and making sure they understand how to, you know, do operations with negative numbers, because if they can't do that stuff, algebra just falls apart. So.
And our teachers, right? So, like, that's, I just want to make another plug.
Yeah.
For the intervention model, right? Because that's, in other places, we'd have interventionists, or tutors, or specialists who are working with our kids on those skills. At the middle school level, it's on our teachers.
Right.
Unless you're identified and going into a math lab or a reading lab, there's not that support available, right, in a fluid ability to sort of move kids in and out of groupings, like you see across the elementary level.
Very much so.
And so, again, that's just, again, a plug for, for that intervention system, that we really feel like will address a lot of needs across a multiple areas. That's all on the backs of our teachers, right?
Yeah.
Which is extraordinary.
Right. But.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll just say to one end, as we've said for the last few years, yeah, we're gonna wait, we're gonna wait, we're gonna wait. We've now waited, now, we've got data, and we're gonna start going forward. And one of the, just one other interesting note, that when I looked, some of the data didn't end up here today, but when I looked at students with disabilities and how they performed over the last three years in that grade eight, even though we look and kind of see how we're going, okay, because those, you know, if we, if we lower that, a couple of the criteria for some of those courses, obviously brings the whole district down, even if it's just that core. But, if we look at students with disabilities, we went in 2017 from only scoring ahead of the state on 25 questions. Last year was 29, this year was 35. So, we've really made some progress there, too. So, there's some growth in there, but you have to kind of get it and find it, but that growth is still, you know, that, where we miss on those questions, we're really missing, and it's, so, anyway, sorry.
So, I think a couple of years ago, there was a similar scenario with science and the MCAS test, because we were tracking to certain AP classes as opposed to the curriculum sequence that the MCAS test was following. And, so, if we're doing that for math, for the same, I think it, it might be helpful in the report going, going forward. If there are scenarios or grades like that, that we can asterisk it, because we're doing this on purpose. We're not teaching to the tests completely, which is a, is a good thing. You know, we're, we're teaching to having, yeah, a good education by the time they graduate from high school, which is the ultimate goal. So.
To your exact point, in fairness to, I mentioned the Math A class, but we also put in that, we started that accelerated college prep sequence for so many, we're gonna have so many more kids reaching calculus in high school. There are also spots in there where I go, oh, whoa, why is this, you know, why is this question at 15%? There's clearly a couple, you know, so, even for some of those excellent students, we missed some spots. And again, it's exactly to your point, we were sort of worrying about that Algebra I piece. So, well, we're working on it, but it's a very good point that you're bringing up.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, I know of our previous discussions, I've always prided ourselves of Hingham has not completely just talked to the MCAS tests. And, so, I think that, but if now, this is what your third report, you give, second report, to think in the future of making some kind of note about it, or just bringing it up, I think that's a positive.
Happy to.
Great.
This is my fourth MCAS presentation.
Sorry.
It's okay. Time flies.
Yes.
It's just so fun, really. I get all excited. Any other questions I could answer for the committee? Carrie?
So, is, is Dessie no longer comparing the subgroups with all students? Like, I noticed, so, for students with disabilities, for example, it was, they measured them against students with disabilities in other towns? Do they, but I was just curious, because eventually, originally, I understood that the goal of all this is to, to close the gap?
It's to close, it's, it's actually, no, they do not. They look at all students versus the lowest-performing 20%.
Okay.
So, they may have disabilities, they may be ELLs, they may have economic disadvantage, so, it's not, or they may have nothing, right? And no protections, and just be the lowest-performing student. So, that's now how they're judging us, is based on the lowest-performing 20% versus all. And that's, and that really comes out in accountability. That's where you see the points awarded for growth and for ELA achievement, math achievement, science achievement, science growth, math growth, I mean, sorry, math growth, English growth, chronic absenteeism, see what I mean? But, that's where all those variables come in, is through accountability. But, it's not students with disabilities versus all, it's all versus the lowest-performing 20%,
Okay.
which could include kids in any, either High Needs or any other group. There, it's not duplicated, though. We don't look at a subgroup, they look at the lowest-performing 20%, which they felt like was a more, I mean, I guess fair is a relative term. They thought it was a more fair assessment, like, you should be, you're based, you're judged against your lowest-performing 20%, regardless of their particular category. It's just they're the lowest 20%. Yeah. Well, I want to thank you very much for your attention and time, and I look forward to sharing our programmatic structure to hopefully address some of these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great job. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right. Now, moving on to item 7.2, to discuss and review new school committee operating protocols and act as appropriate. So, we had come up with these protocols at our workshop that we held with Dorothy Presser from MASC a few, gosh, several, several weeks ago now. And they look great. So, thank you, Carrie, for putting these together. And the committee?
Yes.
All of you guys did, policy, I wasn't sure if it was policy who did that. So, thank you. This is very good. Everybody has a copy of this in their packets. Any questions, comments, edits?
I'll just comment, Carlos, this is where we had a good time with three Chromebooks going and doing a group edit at the same time, and.
Yes. I like it. I only had one thing which may be already, I'm trying to figure out where it would best fit. I think it was just maybe around either our work or our behavior, but I was just thinking about something, since we, should we have just a bullet point in there about how we work with central office staff? Like, if we need assistance, because we don't have our own administrator, like, how do we, should we put in, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not articulating this very well, but say, for instance, I needed, I don't even know, I needed a bunch of copies of something for a meeting. So I wouldn't just walk into the central office and say, I need 100 copies of this right, right now. So, do you feel like that should be in here somewhere? Like, how will, make requests of the, maybe like administrative staff even?
Well, we have that on the order chart, right? Because I think the administrative assistant works for the school committee and the superintendent?
Yes, which, yes, but I'm just saying, but how should we have some sort of protocols around best efforts to give advance notice or-
We should do that for sure.
Yes, yes, exactly. Common sense, yes. But-
Let me see, did the president address our interaction with staff?
Yes.
Yeah, the third bullet in our behavior.
Okay.
Yes.
We will respect the roles and responsibilities of staff and fellow board members.
Yeah, all right, yeah, that's actually, I mean, I guess it's sort of implied there.
And I think, like you said, just a matter of common sense.
Yes.
Just, you know, don't walk in and demand copies, because that person may be doing something else.
Right. Okay, all right, so that's covered under, respect the roles. Okay, all right, fair enough. Any other comments, questions, thoughts? Yeah?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Thinking on the first one, under our role, the first bullet representing and advocating for the interest and achievement of all Hingham students, thought we could include in there the needs, interest, and achievement of all Hingham students. So I think needs and interest are defined differently. You know, needs are something that is required because it's essential or important versus interest or something that are, that is wanted.
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe stressing that it's for all Hingham students.
Sorry, everybody good with that? Yeah, I like the, I like that, I like adding the word needs in there.
Then just inconsistencies with how the periods are used in this, our role versus down below.
Oh, no, it's just my fault.
Just, they're commas versus periods and I'm-
Mary's still here, so, God, it's not-
Help!
So you see how there's comma, 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 and then down there's periods?
Maybe this could be part of the nonfiction study.
Bring the test.
Sorry. All right, so we'll clean those up. And then I have two other things. Under our work, the school committee meetings are held in public. I don't know whether we want to say that it is a business meeting that we hold in public and not a public meeting, because I think there's a difference between the two. We provide an opportunity for people to speak in public, but it is our meeting. And maybe we define that?
Yeah, that's actually a clarification.
Well, in the next sentence, we welcome community members to attend and participate during public comment and public hearings.
Okay, yeah.
That's the distinction-
That's, okay.
-of a public meeting is a business meeting, and a public hearing is when the public is-
Allowed to-
Allowed to interact and communicate. So that was how we distinguish that.
Okay. Okay, and then one other thing. I was looking at other protocols when we were at our MASK training, and there was one district that provided the following, and I thought it was good. Surprises to the school committee or superintendent will be the exception and not the rule. We agree to ask the school committee chair or the superintendent to place an item on the agenda instead of bringing it up unexpectedly at a meeting.
Let me just think for a second on that one. Under 48 hours, if something that's crucial to happen out there, under the law, you're allowed to bring it. You know what I mean? It hasn't happened, I think we have been very cordial with one another. It could happen that we have something happen out there that we want to discuss, but we are not at the, at the freedom to discuss-
Yeah.
...with everyone. And there is no more time to put it on the, on the agenda. So there may be a surprise right there and then.
Right. And so I think that's why it says will be exception, that it, you know, to allow, to not surprise the superintendent with an ask without him being able to get the data for us to provide it-
Okay.
...in an open forum. You know, it happens, certainly happens, but-
And I think that came up in the-
Under our communications, the first bullet, it says, request information from the superintendent and chair rather than directly to the staff. Requests will be made before meetings to allow time for research.
Okay.
And then the superintendent will distribute the requested information to the full committee in a timely manner. So it sort of covers that, yeah.
On the agenda?
Under our, our communications, the first bullet.
Yeah, not that I object to what you're saying, um-
Right, yeah.
...Ness, you know, I would be fine with what you're saying, I think would have to add there, you know, abide, you know, making sure that you abide by 48 hours, you know, policy.
Okay, yeah.
Well, but-
I mean, if you needed to.
Go ahead.
Carlos, the 48 hours, you would still go through the process of bringing it to the attention of the chair and the superintendent. That, it's not, that's, the intent of that is not for anyone to bring something up in the middle of a meeting without still following the, these protocols of it going through the chair and that. So I think what Ness is talking about is, like, what I shared this earlier, my questions for the next meeting, I shared that with Michelle and Paul Saturday, gave them notice that I was going to put it together and that I wanted to be able to share it at the meeting as opposed to me showing up and, here, everybody, and Paul, get this done for me at the next meeting. That, that would have been a surprise.
That's greatly appreciated.
Or that's how I would distinguish-
Right.
...the surprise, but that's why I think we, we had talked about that in the, you know, we can change the wording on our communications, but that was the intent of what we were getting at this.
Right, yeah. Does that, do you think that, does it cover what you were getting at, Ness? Because it does say to make the request before meetings to allow time-
Yeah, before the meetings, yeah.
...and that the response will be given back in a timely manner, yeah?
Yeah, okay. I guess I would also add that, you know, this is, I've never done this type of document before, and my impression of it is this is something that each time there is a school committee of seven brought together after an election, that those new seven people would discuss this and make sure that everybody understands what it is that we're signing onto. Because this is really, this is a pledge of how we're going to behave together.
Yes.
There's, and then if somebody's not, you have a conversation with them and say, hey, this is an agreement.
Right.
There's nothing binding about this.
Right.
But it's this type of conversation that everyone understands what it is we're saying.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So if you're comfortable with this-
Yeah, no, I'm comfortable.
But that's exactly-
Right.
You know, we agree with you that we shouldn't have any surprises, so it's appropriate to wrap it up.
Right. No, I think this is, I mean, this is really a great thing to have, because I think that is also sort of part of the issue, right? That I think sometimes folks come on the committee and you don't really know what the protocols are or what the expectation is, and, oh, why can't I just pick up the phone and call John and ask him a question, or Jamie, or Dr. Venice? And that's not really, that's not the role, and that's not the way it's meant to be. So, so I think it's a good reminder and good for new people coming on. And I think it's important to put it in writing as we, the seven of us sit here today, because the seven of us won't always be sitting here, but for the future generations to come in so that for the administration and the staff, that it's not like, oh, great, a new committee's on, and now we've, now, now it's the Wild West again, right? You know, so this is sort of a document now that for future generations of school committee members they can work with.
Right, and it's also something we can use to evaluate ourselves and our own performance. So we can always look at it and say, well, are we, you know-
Are we doing this?
...we said we were going to do this, so.
Right.
So it's helpful for that.
I think you could perhaps insert a new bullet there then, that this will be signed off right after new members are elected each year, something to that extent.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So that way, you know, we keep, you know, revising, present to everyone, go over, have everyone sign that night, and file.
It's not a bad idea, Mr.-
Yeah. Annual reminder?
Yep.
Sure.
And I'm going to defend the comma and period placements.
Okay. Now that Mary's gone, sure. Can't fact check you.
Oh, by the way, my name is Da Silva. Separate my D and I.
We're still on TV, she can see it, let me go ahead. The first section of our role is statement, and then just supporting statements that aren't sentences. Everything else after our role, under, everything under, everything else is or should be a sentence and ends in a period.
Complete thought, okay.
Complete thought.
Yep, got it.
Sorry, any-
The comma and periodations, or anything that you can think of?
Libby.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. Also, a correction to my name there, if you don't mind, Carlos, A F, D A, space, Silva, Da Silva.
Yep, and then vice is the V capital I that needs to change, too. So you want the F and a space, A F.
A F.
And a space between D A and Silva. Thank you.
And Dr. Shire, do you want Dr. Shire?
Whatever you want to do.
Should we sign this at our next meeting?
Yeah. Yes, let's do, sign it at the next meeting. And everyone's good with this? Because there are some new things, some sort of new-ish protocols in here, particularly as it pertains to reaching out directly to staff or administrators. But I think this is really good. It's good, all right. Do you want to make the changes and the couple of typographical things, and then sign it and vote on it at the next meeting, or vote on it tonight with the suggested changes?
I say we vote on it tonight, yeah.
I would like to get it done, as amended?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Somebody want to make a motion?
Libby, you'd like to make a motion?
Libby would love to make a motion.
Pass the Hingham School Committee 2019-2020 operating protocols.
A second?
Sorry, are they the 2019-2020, or are they-
I'm sorry?
I think they're just the operating protocols, yes?
Oh, they're for this-
Oh, they're just for this year? Okay. I wasn't sure if we were making them.
Yeah, because we're the ones signing it for this year.
All right.
And it will have to be updated next year.
Okay. Oh, with the names, right. All right, so thank you, Libby. All right, second, sorry.
Second.
Carrie, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Great, and that is done. Okay, thank you very much. All right, speaking of 48 hours, any 48 hour items? Dr. Austin, you may have one, yes?
I have one, actually. I'm pleased to announce that our program review from the DESEF Compliance with Educational Stability has found to be in full compliance, which is one of the reasons why I know you've been working on policy on, on students' foster care and homelessness, et cetera. We are in absolute full compliance, so, well done.
Great, thank you. That's good to hear.
We got word today.
Not off the presses, that's great.
As a matter of fact.
That's great. Any other 40 hour, 48 hour items? No? Great. All right, Subcommittee and Project Reports. I know several members, not myself, attended the MASK, MASK conference, so I was going to ask some folks who were there to give a little update, maybe on some of the individual seminars or discussions that they went to. Ness, do you want to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so I have just notes on each of the different classes that I went to. I thought it was really interesting. Let me make sure I have this in order. All right, so one of the ones that I went to is called Reframing Diversity for the 21st Century with Dr. Derek Gay. He talked about reframing the word diversity, as diversity can apply to any group of people. The idea being that people can look similar yet have many differences. And this played out with Carrie and I, we participated in an exercise to show even the differences between us. We certainly have some similarities, as we're the same sex and race. We're both heterosexual. But we realized as we were going through it that we have other differences. Our socioeconomic background when we were growing up and now, religion, age, ethnicity, ability versus disability, et cetera. So he was kind of trying to coach us through thinking about what changes you can't necessarily see on the face, and know, and know that everyone is different, and what that means and how we interact with people. Since we need to be able to collaborate with people who are different than us, we should understand that we may have some blind spots. He then took us through a scenario about the world being made for right-handed people, and I thought this was really interesting. He was talking about different equipment is made for right-handed people, scissors are made for right-handed people, most manufactured items are for right-handed people. For people who are left-handed, they might complain that, you know, these scissors don't work, you know, this doesn't work, this calculator's on the wrong side, the keyboard's on the wrong side, my ink is smudging. So if they start talking about, you know, being left-handed, and they're always talking about being left-handed, a right-handed person would simply say to them, why are you always talking about being left-handed? You don't hear me talking about being right-handed. He was trying to point out that when a group is disadvantaged, you may not appreciate how the disadvantage might impact that person. So he stressed trying to understand multiple perspectives and not trying to invalidate people as you may not necessarily see their issues. So that was a really, really good one. The others won't be as long as that.
The world's also for tall people.
Yes, it is. The School Law 101, it was a review of state ethics, open meeting, and public record law, and the implications for the school district. It discussed topics like teacher gifts, field trips where teachers are chaperoning, tutoring, and second jobs such as coaching and summer jobs, talking about conflict of interest laws, and what constitute deliberations in open meetings. Then there was another one that I attended, was 70 Minutes on Chapter 70. We've talked somewhat, some of that here. It's the State Funding calculation for Education. The basis of the Massachusetts law is that the Commonwealth has a duty to provide an education for all its children. The foundation budget is intended, this is what I found interesting, it was intended to be funded with 59% from local funding and 41% from state funding. In 2015, there was a Foundation Budget Review Commission formed. It found that the foundation budget was lacking due to the increase in health insurance. It was also lacking in dollars for special education and English language learner costs. Legislation to increase the foundation budget was something working its way through the House of Representatives and State Senate. It recently passed both the House and Senate unanimously. They are currently reconciling the differences between the State Senate and the House, and then it goes to the governor. If it will pass, if it passes, it will take several years to implement. Another one is promoting equity through district-wide strategy. This was also a really interesting one. It talked about the importance of understanding implicit bias and how to teach in a manner that promotes equity. The presenters discussed how they implemented the DUCI Equity Roadmap to address equity gaps in their own district. DUCI has a text pilot inventory tool that districts can use. It allows the district to see what types of material are being used to teach, and whether they are enough different sources for all different identities, such as gender, race, sexual preference, ethnicity, disabilities, et cetera. So, for example, one district uses companion text within their ELA programs. The idea would be to take a novel historically taught and continue to teach it as the core text. The students are then asked to select a companion novel that they will read as part of their homework. The students go through a speed dating type of introduction for each companion novel to see which one they would prefer to read. A graphic novel is also included as a possible companion text for each grade level. The teachers who have implemented this program found that the students are more engaged as they are reading something that they're, that they are most closely identify with. They found that students are learning the concepts better. And the teachers found that when they teach with companion texts, they will have one less shared text per year that they are, that they are having to let go of. And then Student Activity Accounts, these are funds that are raised by the students. They typically manage by the students with oversight by advisors and principals. Audits are needed every three years, reviews are needed for the two off-years. A listing of each student activity account should be communicated and approved to the school committee each year. Districts should have policy and procedures in place for things like cash advances and the use of personal accounts. And then they, they found that, they found some things that school districts were doing and put out some good practices. So I will share that with Dr. Austin. And then the last one that I attended was, well, Carrie will report on some other ones, but social media. They stress that we don't all communicate the same way. Differences are generational. Some people will use email, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, et cetera. It's a pathway to news now. They just cautioned when you are on a chat or a forum with other members of the school committee just being careful that you are not necessarily deliberating. So you just have to be aware of that. So those are the ones I was going to report on.
Thank you.
They were great. And yeah, the social media one, I went to that as well. And one thing that was interesting, we talked about some, a lot of districts now have communications, PR people and to help them. And it was just, it was kind of an interesting idea, kind of going with what Ness just said about how everyone gets information in different ways. And it's somebody who can kind of help you be the most efficient in getting that information out. And I was thinking, we were at the All-Town PTO meeting on Friday, we had a little bit of that discussion too because the PTO presidents know the pain of trying to get information out. So and it's that people are accessing it in all different ways, such as food for thought. So yeah, I want to again congratulate everybody from the Hingham team that did the Computer Science Initiative. I was there for the conference and it was a really unique presentation because it had a teacher and a director and the community, the fundraising part of it. It was really, really great. People seemed very engaged and I thought they did. I've been to a lot of these things through HEFF and learned a lot about what you're doing, so it was great. Let's see, Dr. Austin and I went to the presentation on policy and I'm glad we have some things to do. One thing, the field director that gave it said, "Raise your hand if you still are using the old numerical system." And we were the only two people to raise their hands. He talked about, he talked about a lot of ways it's going to make it easier for us to update it and then for DUSI audits and things like that, so that would be good. One thing we did talk about is the school committee is supposed to approve all of the handbooks in the district, which we didn't do this year. So we talked about this a little bit in the Policy Subcommittee, how we might want to come up with, maybe ask the principals this year, or Dr. Austin will do it. To, we can kind of take the manuals, kind of mark them up. And then kind of with a goal of, you know, getting them to make any changes the following year. Because we don't want to, you know, push anyone they're not used to, you know. We have to make sure it all lines up. And this will also be part of the mask process too because they'll be looking at the handbooks as well. So that was good. I went to two things on the Superintendent Evaluation because they just changed the rubric, which was helpful. They suggested looking at what is the work of the superintendent in this cycle to move the district closer to the district goals? And some of the takeaways are you want to look at the goals as evolving and not just year to year. Looking big picture. They talked about output versus outcome, so not, you don't want just a list of things to do and check them off. It's more like what are the results you want to see and are you seeing them? They talked about agreeing and upfront about evidence showing progress towards the goals. They have an evaluation form on the DUSI website in a Word doc that can be customized so we can use the indicators and goals that we have. And so that might be something to look at when we start compiling it. And then they recommended having a policy on input from new members through the school committee and outgoing members as far as to make sure the people that agreed on the goals in the first place get input into how they did it. They wouldn't, if somebody rolls off of the school committee, they wouldn't be able to vote on the evaluation, but it would be helpful to have their input on it. And then new members coming in, because the elections are the end of April and the evaluations are going to be in June, there's really not much time for them to get up to speed. But they should, they're elected and they'll be voting on it. So that's something we talked about, looking at in the Policy Subcommittee too. Or maybe not voting. Or potentially, yeah, we have to see. I went to one about the school committee self-evaluation, which is where the idea of using protocols as an evaluation tool came from. MASC has a policy that we could implement if we wanted to. That would require the school committee to self-evaluate, so we can look at that. The mask field director can come down and do a workshop on school committee self-evaluation if we want that. And again, it was the outputs versus outcomes discussion. How do we, did we move the needle in the last year? And then the other policy we talked about in the Policy Subcommittee is some districts have a policy that committee members must report back to the committee after doing a professional development thing like the MASC Conference because we are using district money to attend. Mara Healy spoke at lunch and she was fantastic, very dynamic. She talked a lot about a lot of the work that she's doing, but in relation to school, she's talked about her work with Sandy Hook Promise, which is a school-based violence prevention and suicide training and mental health training. So she spoke about that, so it was good.
Great, thank you so much.
See, the good thing about being taught, you don't have to say much. Well, I went as a delegate representing this body. I am glad to report that all nine resolutions passed. One of the resolutions that, let your long discussion, was actually the one that we discussed very much. So here, number two, which was, that had to do with pertaining to educators, diversity in professional licensure?
Licenseur.
Licenseur, thank you. And, but what happened there is that there was a consensus that they wanted to split the resolution. So they went, you know, Resolution One, dealing with the licensure. And then the other one, dealing with diversity. And the one that, the two A, dealing with the educated diversity, it passed fifty-four to twenty-four. Some, you know, like I said in the beginning of our discussions here, some of the issues may not be pertaining to us, but there is district out there where they have, you know, a lot of diversity and they having problem, you know, actually attaining teachers with the diverse background. And not only that, the way, then they discussed the portion of the test where, you know, the test, the individual has to come from another state. It's cost-effective. A lot of the times they don't have access with public transportation to those testing sites, so it's very difficult. So anyhow, all nine resolution ended up passing without any major issue. And I, you know, I attended some of, the only workshop that I attended, I had to do the MSBA, an update on MSBA, nothing very new. The only thing that I learned new is that they are encouraging, once that the district is invited to participate, they are encouraging the district to actually hire the designers that are listed as part of, you know, that are involved with the green initiatives. That they can actually offer discount for us when we purchasing, you know, equipment and, you know, furniture and so on and so forth. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Thank you all who attended for your engagement in it. And Libby, thank you for moderating the panel for us there. All right, Subcommittee and Other Reports. Ness, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just have a quick update for East. On December eleventh, they are going to be hosting two Toolbox Training Sessions for parents and they're inviting all parents from Hingham Public Schools to attend. The trainings are going to be on the eleventh. The first one, nine-thirty to eleven, and the second one, seven to eight-thirty. And both will be at East. And then they held their first Parent Social on Friday night at the Community Center. It was well-attended. It's not a fundraiser, just a community building event for parents. The feedback was pretty positive. It came out of a survey from last year that parents wanted to be able to connect with one another. So this is their first launch.
Great, thank you. Libby?
So I will be attending the South School Council Meeting on Wednesday. I sense now what we're going to be talking about. There was going to be an H E F meeting tomorrow night, but I just have received notice that that has been canceled. And there's a list here of H E F activities going on. Do you not see that? I think she wrote it like at six-fifty-nine. So on Sunday, December eighth, there is a Family Day at Paragon Boardwalk from twelve to three, and twenty percent of all the proceeds go to H E F and HSP? Oh, Hingham Sports Partnership. So that's obviously a joint effort. And then on Tuesday, December seventeenth, there's Kringsman Yoga Exercising for Education. And then on Friday, April third, there's going to be a spring fundraiser. That's in the works. And then Community Outreach, I am in the process of trying to schedule two coffees with the superintendent, one at Linden Ponds and one at the Senior Center.
Great, thank you. To be determined.
To be determined.
Thank you. Liza?
I don't have anything on salary negotiations. I guess we'll talk in executive session. But as far as the master plan goes, we are in the visioning activity part of the master plan effort. And so today was the first public meeting, it was this morning in Town Hall. And Carrie participated as a participant and I was there as a facilitator and we had a really great turnout. Wide cross-section of the community. And so it was deemed a success for the first session. And then this afternoon, I went to the high school and did a visioning session with students and we had over forty students. They were very engaged. They, yeah, identified very consistent aspects of the town that the adults had. But they also came up with their own view and some of the things that they'd like to see more of. They did all acknowledge that we provide a good education, so that was good to hear. But they would like to have some more youth-oriented stores in the downtown and some better places that they could hang out, some better restaurants. But they also appreciated the open space that we have. They did want another turf field. But then they also talked about, we wish the roads would be better because there are too many potholes and there's some neighborhoods that are very dark and we wish that there were better street lighting. So they, you know, were talking about those kinds of just regular life issues too, which I hadn't heard the streetlight thing from the other, the adults. So it was really good. So tomorrow afternoon, I'm going to the middle school to hear from middle school students. And then Wednesday night at seven PM, there is a session here at Town Hall for anyone in the community can attend. And then Saturday at eleven-thirty, there's another session. And December thirteenth, there's one at the Senior Center, so don't schedule call for December thirteenth. And then you may hear of other smaller visioning sessions going on because there'll be little ones around the community with small groups. But so that's the big activity for the master plan, just collecting input right now.
Awesome, thank you. Dr. Ed, anything to report?
Well, as previously mentioned, I attended the PRS Council earlier today. I opened a very good session. Would ask the TV community out there, the council is actively seeking a community representative, someone who does not have kids in the school actively, but can be a former parent or a grandparent. And if that individual is available, it's essentially once a month, pre-scheduled, so you'll know the dates and just contact the principal or the assistant principal right at Plymouth River School.
Great, thank you. Carrie?
So policy met on November twelfth and we covered most of that. The contract with the MASC was, has been signed and sent in, so I'll follow up with Jim Hardy. For the middle school, I went to the PTO meeting last week. The coffee with the principal was first, from eight to nine. And it was a discussion of resiliency. It started as a discussion of how to kind of instill kids with grit and to kind of caution parents do not be helicopter parents or snowplows. You can't, if they don't fail, then they won't learn, so that kind of thing. And it led to a really interesting discussion about how to navigate that line between, you know, letting kids fail so they can learn from that, but also making sure they have the appropriate scaffolding to help them navigate it themselves because it is such a big transition from fifth to grade, to grade five to grade six. And there were a number of grade six parents in the room, so it was good. And then during the meeting, Lauren Seoka and Melissa Goldman went over the One Book One School Initiative that they, this is I think their fourth year doing that and it was fascinating. They tend to choose books that have global themes that teaches kids like Life is Different Beyond Hingham and Massachusetts. And then the books often lead to other school activities. So this year, they did, the PTO sponsored a visit from Stacy McNulty, who's the author of the book, Miscalculations of the Lightning Girl. If you want to, I would highly recommend looking at their website, the One Book One School website and looking at some of the initiatives that have come out of this. It was very moving. And then we had the school council meeting today. They're heading into the National Association of Educational Progress Testing tomorrow. Fifty, I guess fifty-three students from the middle school ages thirteen to fourteen that were identified by the organization will be tested. Report cards recently went out at the end of term one. They have Spirit Week next week. So they'll be dressing up and all sorts of things. I noticed they picked the two-and-a-half-day week to.
You have to explain everything at your conference.
Do you just get to say teacher and you get a, oh, okay, got it.
There are going to be two surveys going out to the middle school. The first one is transition for sixth-grade parents. And then the second will be a general survey for all parents. So school council reviewed them today and then they'll be going out soon. And then we had the same discussion about MCAS accountability and the chronic absenteeism. I also went to the All-Town PTO meeting on Friday and Dr. Austin went over the budget calendar and we also went over the new Superintendent Introduction Program questions that have been asked at all the coffees. And it was interesting to see certain themes emerge that seem to be at the community ones too. All the schools reported on their activities and they're all doing a great deal of community service and fundraising for our schools, so thank you to them.
Speaking of All-Town PTO, Pam King had an excellent suggestion for the All-Town PTO. So I was going, I was attending the meetings as liaison, but I couldn't make it this Friday. So Carrie went in my stead. And Pam had a suggestion that it is such a great way to see community members and hear what's going on at the schools. So Pam had suggested that each of us take a turn going to the All-Town PTO meetings, not just me. So if folks are agreeable to that, I think there is not one in December. But there will be one in January, so if anyone, let me know.
And they're Friday mornings at nine.
Yes, and they have a, they end ten-thirty?
Ten-thirty the latest.
Ten-thirty at the latest, so an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes. So. No, once a month, on the second Friday generally-ish? I'll send out the dates to people and then you can let me know which one you'd like to attend. Thank you. All right, great. Carlos?
All right. So Long Range Planning Subcommittee met this Saturday, past Saturday, jointly with the full school committee. Thanks everyone for attending. The advisory committee, Board of Selectmen, Capitol Outlay, Foster School Building Committee, and who else did I miss?
Foster PTO President.
Foster PTO President there, Dr. Wilcox gave a nice presentation. But we discussed the possibility of applying for an SOI for the Plymouth River School Windows. We discussed the pending SOI for Foster that we should hear, you know, from the state, whether we have been accepted into, you know, you know, to the eligibility period by, I believe, December eleventh. And then we told the, you know, Foster, we showed everyone because we had new members of the advisory, we had new members of the school committee. So we, you know, did a walkthrough at Foster and saw the boiler and the other, the classrooms and, you know, how it is crucial to have, you know, some changes made over the ASAP. And we also discussed next steps. We will be meeting on the eighteenth, December eighteenth at six PM. We have invited the members of the advisory, Board of Selectmen, town administrators and everyone. It's open to the community. Hopefully, we will have, you know, the next steps lined up by then. Since we'll be here, you know, from the state the week before, hopefully we can update the community on what's the next steps will be. Anything else that I forgot to mention about that day?
No, it was a great discussion.
That was good.
It was a really good discussion.
Yeah, many felt that was very productive. It was a great way to interact with, you know, other elected and appointed officials in the town.
I did, I would like to mention John had come up with a suggestion to meet more frequently, especially around budget talks because John did point out that, you know, we sort of meet a lot in January. And then in February, late January, early February, we have sort of one meeting with the Board of Selectmen and AdCom, but maybe those discussions. of one meeting with the Board of Selectmen and AdCom, but maybe those discussions should be happening sort of quarterly throughout the year. So I think that's a great idea, and people seemed, people seemed open to that.
So we, Long Range Planning, although we just met Saturday, we'll be meeting again tomorrow. And the public are invited. We'll be meeting right here at 4:30 PM. And part of the discussion is to hear an update on the school master plan, update on the scoreboard. We'll be discussing building 179 and building 12. And we also discuss what happened at the meeting on Saturday. So, and we'll begin the discussions on the capital budget for 2021. So that's our next thing. High school.
I just wanted to say, that meeting actually will take place and start in the superintendent's office.
Okay.
Because this room is, this room will be used.
Not a problem.
We could possibly move into here at 5:00, but we're going to start in the superintendent's office.
Okay. Anyone interested in attending, just not, not from the front door.
Tomorrow night. That's right, tomorrow night.
And the front door will be open.
We'll have it open, yes.
Great. Very good. Anything else about Saturday?
No.
No? Good. The high school council met this past month. I was not able to attend. The next meeting is on December 4th, and I hope to be there.
All right. Thank you. All right, I have two things. Special Ed Subcommittee met last week. Sorry, I forget, November 14th, maybe? Ah, some, we met. Late last week. It was a great meeting. Dr. Venis gave us some great updates on some of the things that she is focusing on this year, enrollment, staffing, and some of the things we'll need to think about while we consider the budget, including enrollment and staffing, professional development, technology, curriculum, supplies. So there's a lot to consider as you put the budget together. But we have great staffing in place. The professional developments have been going really well. So we've got a lot of things, positive tailwinds, and we've got some headwinds coming where it comes to equipment and supplies. But hopefully, we can address those in the budget this year. And Dr. Venis is recruiting for the Special Education Continuous Improvement Task Force. And I think the meetings start in January, January. So folks will be seeing around that. And then, another day, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting all my dates, but the executive board, myself, Carrie, and Carlos met with Dr. Austin and his inductee mentor, just to go over the superintendent's rubric, because it has changed. And I'll be sending out some information to folks. At our December 2nd meeting, we will talk about the, we'll have to select the indicators that we will be using. And we, the three of us, Dr. Austin and the mentor, and sort of came up with some ideas for indicators that we thought were appropriate. So there are, you're to pick two to three per goal. So I'll send out some more information on that. We can act on those next meeting. And that is all I have. Anything over there? No? All right. Well, our next meeting is December 2nd. It is a full school committee meeting. We'll be getting the high school council report, and then we will adjourn to a workshop that is open to the public, but it won't be televised. And at that workshop, we'll be talking about fees. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of approval of minutes of the executive session of the school committee held on November 4th, 2019, and to discuss matters related to the current HEA Unit A collective bargaining contract, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and discussing matters related to the collective bargaining negotiations with the HEA Unit A for the 2020-2023 contract, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
All right, thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Libby. All those in favor, I need a roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you.